Call the, uh, the meeting to order. Can I have, uh, a motion for approval of the minutes?
I will so move.
Second. George? All in favor? Unanimous, gentlemen.
One abstention.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Mike was, uh, not here. He was on vacation last time. And don't go on vacation again. We missed you.
Tom, I got something to say before we get going.
Yes.
Are you collecting for the food bank?
Yes, we are.
Are you the collector tonight? The reason I'm making this, I got a hundred dollar bill here. And as all you know, I give maybe twenty bucks at a time, ever. The reason that I got the hundred dollar bill for you, Tom, is that it's in the name of Ronnie Kopp. The reason it's in the name of Ronnie Kopp is that...
What did he do for you now?
That he did some work on my truck.
He sold them to him.
And he put a new part in the truck. And he spent hours trying to find the problem with the air conditioning, and he couldn't find it. And I went to pay him for what he had done, and he wouldn't take anything. But that's the way Ronnie is. And, uh, you know, the rest of the year, whatever dribs and drabs I can give to the food bank are gonna be in Ronnie Kopp's name, I'll tell you that.
Thank you, George. Appreciate it. Oh, by the way, on the, uh, approval of the minutes, I gotta tell you, the reason that the minutes are always approved so quickly is because Brenda sends out a draft ahead of time to us. And we make comments then. And so consequently, there are, there's no, uh, no, uh, changes noted. So, thank you, Brenda. And we did have an approval of the minutes. Okay, so, thank you. The next item, uh, is the manager's report, but I'm going to go off base a little bit here, is to hear a report from the town manager. This is, uh, item twenty dash fifty-nine. To hear a report from the town manager, reference discontinuance of a portion of Turkey Lane from, uh, Range Road to the snowmobile bridge, and to set a public hearing date of September fourteenth to hear, uh, public, uh, testimony, uh, on the order of discontinuance. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, do you want to, um, want me to go back to manager's report just to give you an update, uh, for the, uh, item we had listed, uh, with the Chamber of Commerce and with a couple of other items around town? Would that be okay?
Yes, good.
Uh, thank you. Uh, two, two items, very exciting items, uh, for those of us, uh, who are here in Cumberland. Today, the historical society building moved about sixty-four feet in a good direction. So, uh, it now sits on top of the foundation, elevated about, uh, three feet above the foundation. Uh, right now, we are waiting our mason, George Libby, to come to town. And, um, he will basically be, begin building the piers to connect the two. And we are hoping by mid-October, we'll be ready to have Dave Swan, our builder, begin on the, uh, construction of the new home for the historical society. Uh, this is a really, uh, long process, and one I'd never recommend to anybody. But I would tell you that, uh, come this winter, when we can actually, uh, christen the building as being ready for occupancy, I think it'll all be worth it. The building is a historical part of our community. Uh, when Cumberland, uh, was Cumberland back, uh, when it started in eighteen twenty-one, uh, moving forward, we had thirteen of these type of schoolhouses all across town. I think three of them were on Chabig Island, and, uh, ten of them were on the mainland. Uh, no, actually, uh, three were, two were on Chabig, one was on Hope, and ten were on the mainland. And there are only this one, and I think the one on Cross Road. Shirley, am I right? Is those the only two that are left, Bob? Do you remember? I think there's only two.
There's one on, on, uh, Tuller Road.
That's still standing?
Still standing. It's a private residence now.
Oh, it is? Okay, so that's, that's...
Almost across the street from, uh, the Methodist Church.
Okay, okay. Well, it's just amazing to me, and if you look at it, and there are residents still alive today that actually went to school there. So it's actually...
My father went to school there.
Oh, no kidding?
At the red one.
No kidding?
Down on Tuller Road.
So I...
You had to bring wood with you when you went to school. To keep it heated.
I had a teacher who actually lived there.
Yeah, me, I did too.
Imagine that.
Well...
So did I.
So it's been exciting to watch.
Yes.
Mel Berkley.
And it took from ten, about ten fifteen this morning till almost five-thirty tonight before it was moved over the foundation. That's how slow it moved. Paint did dry faster than watching this building move. It, you could've, I think you could've painted half your house in the time this building moved. But it was slow, but it was pretty impressive, uh, the way the movers, um, moved that, uh, hundred-and-fifty thousand pound structure. It was very impressive. So, keep, be patient. That's all I'm asking. It's gonna take some time. It'll be worth it when it's over. Uh, the other piece of good news, um, today, we did what I like to refer to as sacrificial paving on Route Nine from about Turkey Lane to the Falmouth Line. So it is safe to travel that road again, for those of you who don't want to incur major car repair. Sorry, Ron. Uh, but, uh, loss of business for the Kopp Motor Family, but, uh...
Or bike tires.
Or bike tires. It, it was a very rugged road. I was fortunate, uh, with the relationship that we have with DOT. Uh, we shared in the cost. So, uh, they contributed fifty percent of the cost of that today. Uh, it was well worth it for our while in just trying to save the road and, and the times we've had to go out, go out to repair potholes and to try to patch that has just been fruitless. It's truly shoveling against the tide when you're out there on that road. It's such, such bad shape. Uh, this spring, uh, the MDOT is scheduled to rehabilitate that road. Uh, what that means, I, well, I'll, will tell you that, uh, there'll be additional gravel added to it. Uh, the base, uh, the shoulders will be widened out to four more feet. And, uh, the whole thing will be repaved with probably about three to four inches of paving. So, uh, I don't have the specific details of the construction, but, uh, it's a heck of an improvement over what it is today. The unfortunate piece of that is there's not a lot of major repairs going to be done to it. Not for, I think it's one point five million dollars, uh, the cost for this. It's about thirteen thousand feet. It's not gonna be totally excavated and totally box-cut with new gravel or anything. Uh, it's really gonna be the best they can do and the best we'll get for a long time. But, um, it certainly will be a big improvement over what we have today. So stay tuned and, uh, be prepared for that. And then, uh, finally, um, at our last meeting, uh, here, uh, the council requested that the, um, uh, standing in solidarity against racial and social injustice, um, uh, request from the chamber be shared and discussed at this meeting. Uh, this would be, uh, well, it's your opportunity to talk about the, uh, chamber's, um, uh, publication that, uh, many local businesses and, uh, regional businesses have signed in on. And, uh, they have given towns the opportunity to sign in on the statement as well. Uh, we were, our meeting came too late for us to, uh, basically discuss this last time. But I believe they're also going to, uh, do another publication with additional towns and cities that may want to participate. So, uh, I thought, uh, and as did several councilors, to bring it back for discussion, uh, whether we endorse it or develop our own statement or do something else. That's totally up to the council. But, uh, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, for additional discussion.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I've heard that we had a number of letters that came in, uh, today. Uh, was that, is that correct?
That is correct.
And I think, uh, we're gonna ask Shirley to read them.
Yeah, we've had three letters come in today. Um, one from Jessica and Matt Grandin, who wanna go on the record as being in favor of this and encouraging us to sign it. The same request came from Rebecca Brown, a Cumberland resident, and also from Annika Hole, um, who encouraged us to sign it. And her words were interesting. "I am impressed by the support and resources the chamber is providing, and I would be proud for Cumberland to join the long and diverse list of employers who have already signed this pledge."
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Bill thought that one of them wanted their entire letter read, but I don't think so. I think they just wanted to go on the record as being in favor.
And who was that?
The Jessica and Matt Grandin.
Good. That's him for the record, then.
So I reread the letter. They just really, they both, they intended to be here tonight to speak in favor and encourage us to sign it.
Thank you. Discussion? Bob?
I asked to have this put on the agenda last, last meeting for this meeting, and I had hoped that somebody from the chamber might came, might show up. And I had hoped that somebody from the, uh, the major list of signers might show up. But anyways, um, that being said, I am prepared to make a motion, and if it's immature, you know, immature, if it's premature, uh, I will hold back. But, um, I've, I've gotten a little bit of, I've done a lot of thinking about this and a lot of, uh, consideration. And I'm prepared to put this motion, this to a motion this evening. Uh, I won't do it yet, like, 'cause I think we'll, a lot, a little discussion, uh, go through. Uh, but I, I, I think that, um, after careful consideration, uh, this is not a, this is not a big step for us as a council. It may be a, it may be a, a small step for us individually. It may be a big step for some of us individually. But as a council, for us to show support, uh, of hiring practices and how we conduct ourselves as a community, I don't see this as a big step as, as a, as a town council. Uh, and to further, um, look at this, I went down through the list of, of people and organizations who have subscribed to this. And if you look closely, there's a lot of people who are connected to our community on this list of, uh, uh, organizations. I just, uh, I, I, I'm hesitant to use his name, but I think it's an important, uh, person to, to highlight. Uh, Bill Nimitz, uh, decided he would roast Stephen Hesett in his law firm recently about when they considered, uh, not closing their business for COVID-nineteen. But I see that Norman Hanson Detroit is one of the signers here. And Steve Hesett, by name, is mentioned. And I'm just curious whether Bill Nimitz might, uh, take the time to, to give him an attaboy for that. So, and I also had to think about this from my own perspective, too. And I'm not a racist, but that doesn't make me a good person either. And, and I have my own character flaws. I probably have a lot of character flaws. Somebody recently gave me a book that, um, was, uh, was a very big eye-opener. And it, it has nothing to do with Black Lives. It, but it, it had, certainly has a lot to do with, uh, systemic racism against other people. And then this, this book happens to be about, uh, Indians in, um, Oklahoma who, um, were forced off their lands, and they were given this piece of land, uh, to settle on. And one of the things that they did was retain their mineral rights. And nobody thought the land was any good. But as it turned out, uh, uh, killers of the flower moon, in case anybody wants to run right out and buy it. But it, it, it paints a picture of, uh, this thing reads like a dime store, dime store novel. It is, it's, it's just incredible. Uh, the government said that the Indians could have this piece of land. They could have the mineral rights to it. And what they ended up doing is, is they were, sold these leases, and oil was on this land. And, but the government ruled that these people needed to have a guardian. Every Indian who had a lease had to have a guardian. The guardian had to be white. And all of a sudden, uh, the Indians started dying. It was just, it's just an incredible story. Uh, they were murdered, uh, uh, over a hundred Indians were, were murdered, and, and the white people profited by it. And anyways, it's, it's, uh, it was a, it brought home to the fact that, you know, people will take advantage of other people. And, and we, as a community, have an onus to, to say that, you know, we're not going to do that, that, that we, uh, we as a, as a council, not we individually, uh, but we as a council, uh, can step up and, and, uh, say that, you know, the buck stops here. The responsibility starts here, the right thing to do starts here. And, uh, uh, so, uh, I'm happy to move to make a, make a motion to support this. Uh, we can change the language, perhaps, to say the town of Cumberland. But, uh, that's, that's, that's my thoughts this evening.
Thanks, Bob. Other comments? George?
I agree with, um, Bob for most of what he said. I would put a perspective that's a little different than his in the sense that I think it's a small thing for us individually to support Black Lives Matter and everything that has to do with anti-racism. But I think it's a small thing as individuals. And it's a small thing for everybody in this town who, anybody with a grain of sense knows that racism exists not in just small pockets, but in large pockets in this country. The problem I have is, the reason I say it's small on our part and it's a large thing to do as a council is because in forty years, I don't think this council has ever made a blanket statement, um, of political significance. Right, I'll put it that way. To the extent the statement is political, what bothers me about a council blanket affirmation is that the, is one word, systemic. And the fact of the matter is racism exists all over the country. It's existed a long time. We've had, uh, a lot of progress made since the nineteen-sixties and beyond. And there's a heck of a lot of work to be done. But systemic is an opinion. The fact of racism, and its being broadly extended in the country, is a no-brainer. But to say that it's systemic in the system, to me, is at least questionable. And to the extent it's questionable, it's opinion. And to the extent it's embedded in our statement, I think by acting as a council, we are taking a large step because we're doing something, we're advocating a political statement. And it hasn't been done in forty years. And to that extent, I have a problem. But I also feel strongly enough about racism so that I don't have a worry. If the rest of the council, um, thinks my concerns charter-wise or otherwise are, are misspent, I'll be glad to vote with you. But that's the way I look at it.
Thanks, sir.
And I think it is a consideration we have to make as a council, as a group, and as individuals. But as a group, we're making a statement that hasn't been made in forty years. And maybe it's time.
Thank you, George. Allison?
Thank you. Um, I, I can appreciate that the word systemic brings a lot of emotions, right? We're, we're all sitting up here and, um, but I don't know that I, I think where I disagree is that it's political and that it's an opinion. Because the word systemic comes from system, our financial systems. The fact that so much of what, how you move forward in this country is around financial score and demographic score and your ability to get insurance. That those systems have developed in a way that unfortunately make it less likely that people of color are able to have the same likelihood of having a high financial score and a higher demographic score and a high insurance score. And so all of those things snowball. And so when it comes to systemic, I don't, I don't view that word, and I don't think those that put it in here meaning that it's systemic, that the people in the system are racist. It's that the system and how it's built, and how it's built over the last hundreds of years, unfortunately, because of how we grew up as a country, puts people of color at a disadvantage. And so I can absolutely appreciate that there are some that would view this as a political statement because of the political environment we're in right now. But I do not believe that was the intent of, of the usage of the word in this statement. And I definitely don't think it's the intent of the pledge itself when it's so centered. And I know we're not reading the statement, and maybe that would be helpful for those, um, that are watching at home. But it's much more about education, right? And implicit bias, which really isn't just about race either, right? As a woman, I feel that. And, um, I feel like those of a certain age may feel it on either end of the spectrum, right? About just learning and educating as humans that, you know, we have this implicit bias. It is, it's biochemistry, chemistry of how we've grown up and how we adapt. And so I see the, some of the tools that they have already put out, the chamber, but, you know, doesn't mean that we, as a council, or Bill and his team, that we couldn't educate in a different way. But I view this much more about education and pledging to continue to grow and educate ourselves versus pledging that we are, you know, saying we've either done anything wrong in the past and/or would be doing something wrong in the, in the future. And again, just about education, um, about where we're at today and where we could be going.
Thank you, Allison. Other comments?
Go ahead, Shirley.
Shirley?
When I, uh, we got our first letter was from Annika Hole. And she wrote in her letter, it's not, uh, only the statement, not only the words that are important. And when I first read this, what I thought was, this is, this is words. There's no action here. And that's one of the things that, uh, we can all engage in the rhetoric. But until we're brave enough to take an action, and maybe just adopting this letter is, you know, or signing this, agreeing to sign this letter is an action. But it's only a small action. And it's like Bob was saying, it's a small action. It might be a big deal. But there's, there's really a lot of work to be done. I read an, um, an article in not this Sunday's paper, but last Sunday's paper. And one of the authors was, is it Rachel Talbot Ross? She's the, um, she's one of the representatives from Portland. And it was called "Getting Our House in Order." And then I did some more researching after the, I read the article because she said that in our country, black immigrants fare better in the system than what she called indigenous blacks. Well, I said, well, blacks aren't indigenous. Only Native Americans are indigenous. But I kind of took issue with the word, again. But I know what she meant. She meant black people who were brought here unwillingly and whose families grew generationally from, out of slavery. And I thought, that what an interesting sociological study that would be is looking into why. You know, why do immigrant blacks fare better in our systems? Maybe we could fix the system faster if we knew the answers to that. But anyway, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good step. I don't think it's, I don't think it's highly political. I would disagree that it's a political statement. There are people on both sides of the political spectrum in this list of signatories. And so I'm, I'm supportive of it.
Thanks, sir. Mike?
A quick question, Brenda. Do we have an employee statement on employment, hiring as a community?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Can that be provided to the council?
Sure.
And, and I think that's where, for me, that's where we start, is, I don't know why the chamber's doing this. Somebody's gonna have to convince me why. I've been around this town all my life. I don't know that we've ever had a claim of racism against this town. I don't know that we've, as a council, ever have not hired somebody because of their race. I have some issues with the, this statement. Listen, this is not the piece of garbage that the school put out, which was nothing but a piece of trash, accusatory. It, what the school put out was divisive, a horrible piece of, a statement. I can't find, you know, there's a few little things here and there, in this statement that I, I wish weren't in there. But, um, it's a good statement. I mean, it's something that, um, I, I don't have a problem signing on to. I'm not really sure why, like you said, the, why the chamber's doing this. Uh, other, maybe they just wanna jump on the bandwagon. Well, for me, the bandwagon's how we conduct our personal life every single day. And, um, so, yeah, I, I don't mind throwing my John Hancock on this. And, um, you know, for me, it's, it's what, it's what this town does every single day. And I won't, and I refuse to be broad-brushed with other places that do things, which I think don't do things right, or, um, places that really, the racism is blatant. I won't accept it for this town. This is a good town with good people. I make no apologies, um, for, out of how diverse or lack of diversity this town is. It's the way it is. So, I said, I'll, I'll, I'll sign on to it. Uh, I just, uh, I, I would rather see us do stuff individually as a town than I would signing on to this. What we do, like you said, that's why I asked Brenda that question on, yeah. I think the town having a, a statement on our hiring practices, that's what's important. If we had a problem in town with not hiring people just because of their color, that's our problem. That's what we need to fix. I mean, this is feel-good, great, we signed it. But it's our day-to-day action, so. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mike, thank you very much. Ron?
I am afraid that no matter how people look at this that they're gonna think it, that it's a political statement. I mean, I, I just, I'm in Mike's camp. I have no problem signing this whatsoever. I've lived in this town my entire life. I don't think there's a racist person in this town. I really don't. I mean, I've, I've lived in West Cumberland. I've got friends of color. I've got Orientals that are friends. I mean, I've, I don't have a racist bone in my body. I'm just afraid that people are gonna think that if we sign this, okay, they're admitting that they were racist, and now they're gonna step up to the plate. I don't think there's a racist person in this room. I really don't. I mean, and I don't have any problem signing this. But I think the sadness is that the death of a black man has brought this all up. It's tragic. But there's been deaths of everybody in the country. I mean, just look in Lewiston Friday or Saturday night. I mean, you know, this poor woman holding a baby. I mean, it, it's, there's crime everywhere. No matter how you look at it, it gets turned around that it's a political statement. I mean, and I, I, I have no problem signing this, and I'll stop there.
Thanks, Ron. Mr. Manager, you mind, uh, getting into this a little bit with us? Personally, I think we could have our own action plan. I, I don't think we need to, to sign on to this. We could, uh, come up with an action plan that shows piece by piece what we're doing and how we're addressing it. And I would advocate for that. I don't, Bill, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
I, I think you're, I think Shirley kind of summed it up best. I, I think this is a small step. And then what you do to follow up, uh, is the next step. What are you gonna do? Are you gonna look at hiring practices? Are you going to see where you are as a community and where you are as a town? All those things are easy things to do, but we haven't done them in a long time. And, yeah, we have a nondiscrimination clause in just about everything we sign and everything we do. We take state and government, and federal funds all the time, and those require you to have those policies in place. So we have those. But it's checking a box. Let's not check a box. Let's actually do something more meaningful. This is a small step, and I'm encouraged that, that people are willing to take that small step. But if we do nothing else, then shame on us.
Right. Shirley, you want to...
I just wanted to say, one of the things I, I think, I think it's an important step for us just because of what our community went through this spring. You know, I, I was chair when we received hundreds of letters. And, and Mike's absolutely right. It was, it was horribly divisive. And I think what this letter says is... And I think what this letter says is, these are things we can all agree on, and this is where we're going to start. And then, like the manager said, then we have some work to do after that.
It's a good starting point.
Yeah.
Bob, you had a comment?
I am going to make that motion, but I, I just want, I, I agree with Ron. You know, that's, we, we're not a, we're not a, we're not a racist community, but the fact of the matter is, we live in a country that is divisive. We live in a country that has spent hundreds of years taking advantage of one group versus another. And so showing, showing that we're not going to stand for that, again, is, is a very small step. And it's, but it's, it's an important thing for, for us to, to say that. And then I keep going back to this list and every time, and every time I look at this list, I see another name that, that jumps right out, out at me. My next-door neighbor is, is the managing partner of Drummond Woods and Ben Marcus. Ben Marcus and Stephen Hesett are both great lawyers. They're, they're different, the night and day. Steve Hesett raised or did raise dog sleds, you know, and raised dogs. My, my neighbor Ben is an avid bice list. Two different, two different gentlemen, two different backgrounds, two different thoughts on life. But, you know, the more I look at the, the list here, you know, this is, this is, we're just mirroring what the community wants us to do. And I'm not afraid to, to, you know, take some heat for, for this or, but it's, anyways, I'm going to change a couple of words and I'm going to, I'm going to make the motion. And I think as, as, what's your name, Shirley here said? It's a small step. Our community, our community, the Town of Cumberland pledged to combat racism and discrimination, to advocate for racial and social equity, diversity, and inclusion in the workplace. We have lived through a transformational time, the deaths of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, and Breonna Taylor were catalysts for peaceful demonstrations, which we support, and important conversations on racial and social injustice around the world. Maine companies, organizations, and communities are part of a global movement to address systemic racism, racism and improve the quality of life, access to opportunities and economic inclusion for black indigenous people, indigenous and people of color. We as leaders of the Town of Cumberland understand that when it comes to racial and social justice, silence is not an option. We recognize that we have a responsibility to advocate for positive change and demonstrate our commitment to racial equality in areas of influence and such as, and such, such as inclusive reinforcement recruitment practice. Somebody should read this for me. Addressing barriers to hiring and retaining foreign-trained professionals and workplace programs to promote cross-cultural understanding. We condemn, we condemn racism in any form, have zero tolerance for discrimination, and pledge to participate in authentic dialogues about race, diversity, equity, and inclusion. As employers in a state with a majority of the population identifies as white, we will advocate for positive change and focus on the critical work, critical work of anti-racism. We commit to continuously evaluate our own practices to ensure that we live up to these values and standards and to educating our employees on racism and engaging in programs that advance racial equity. With openness, humility, and respect, we can learn from each other and from the communities we live, live and work. We encourage our colleagues, our community partners, and each of our neighbors to join us as we promote racial and social justice throughout Maine.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody from the public want to add anything to this? Yes, please state.
Don't recognize that woman.
Please state your name.
No, don't do that either.
State your name, where you live.
Lyndvale 16 Wild Way. And you can go like this, Bob. You know, these are enormously difficult times right now in our country. There's just no question about it. And I, I just want to share a couple of things that happened to me that really opened, began to open my eyes and my ears. Probably, I don't know, a year and a half ago, I had been engaging with someone in political discussion primarily. We shared what I thought was the same ideology, a lot of good ideas being shared. And at one point in our last conversation, he said to me that he thought that I would benefit by having a better understanding of white privilege and white supremacy. And these, you know, these are tough words. These are offensive words. And I think that I probably reacted in the exact same way that most people do. I was offended, you know? You don't know anything about me, how I grew up or, and that conversation kept replaying in my head. You know how those things can happen? And it just kept rewinding. And I have to say that it's when I finally began to hear those words, white privilege and white supremacy. And it has enough of my curiosity that I just want to say that I hope as a community that we can come together and talk about this. It starts with a discussion. We have to be able to talk about something that's very difficult. Along the way, I mean, I've heard a lot of reactions within our community. And certainly there's a lot of support for this, but I, I just want to say that, you know, when I've heard people say, well, you know, all lives matter. Well, that's true, in my opinion, if you mean all racial minorities. If you're talking about Native Americans, any minority. But if we're saying that as a way of reducing the meaning of what Black Lives Matter, dismissing it, then that's wrong. We do, there are some things, I do believe there are some things wrong in our system. I want to learn about them. I've asked myself, why is this a white community only? Why is that? I think there are some systemic reasons, ought to say it a little nicer, like Allison did, maybe a little more palatable to us. There are some things in the system that make it very difficult for minorities to break out and become part of communities like we live in. There, there, even outside of our communities, there's a problem with how we fund public school systems. There has to be a different way to do it. And, you know, the final thing that I want to share, which was part of my eye-opening, we had someone from the family at our house one afternoon. And she was very excited to talk about a new home that her son and daughter-in-law had purchased. They don't live in Maine. They live in the part of the country where a posted stamp lot is, you know, more than the most expensive house in Cumberland practically. And she's, her comment ended with something like, well, it's not, wouldn't be my dream home, but at least they got out of a neighborhood where Mexicans were primarily living there. And I was so stunned that I just blurted her name out. But that was another conversation that I kept rewinding. And I think it points to hidden biases. Because when I replayed that, and I had to be honest with myself, okay, you're looking for a home. You've got two choices, Home A, Home B, all things being equal, except I would be the minority in House B. House A, I would live.
Linda, you, you're going a little long.
Okay, I'll wrap up. Anyway, the sheer fact that I paused on which house I would buy said it all. We do have, I do not consider myself, would never have considered myself an individual racist. You wouldn't find me on a street corner doing or blurting racist things, but I obviously, the sheer fact I paused, I think a lot of us have hidden biases and we just don't know it. So I hope that we can come together as a community. I hope that we can do it through education, not just for the council, but for the community as, as a whole. And thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Linda. Appreciate it. Anybody else from the public want to talk on this matter? I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Further discussion? Do we have a motion? Bob, you had the motion?
I made the motion.
Want to, anybody who wants to second that?
I will second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Thank you. Thank you. Nice discussion and a tough discussion, very sensitive. Okay, I'm going to go to, back to 20-059. And this is what I started to say, to hear a, a report from the town manager, reference discontinuance of a portion of Turkey Lane from Range Road to the snowmobile bridge and to set a public hearing date of September 14th. Public testimony in ordinance, in, in order of discontinuance. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start probably a rewind because this was the same motion that was on your last agenda and the council tabled. I had a very long discussion with Councilor Vale and explained the importance of the discontinuance of Turkey Lane. I think, Bob, I'm not going to speak for you, but I think the issue in a nutshell was the discontinuance of the 60-foot right-of-way in, for a 20-foot public easement. Bob's objection was to give up any public land was not in our best interest and that he would be more in favor if we discontinued it as a 60-foot public easement versus a 20-foot public easement. So the first piece of legislation before you, before we get much further, is that item has got to come off the table. So we'll need a vote to take that item off the table and then I'll continue with the rest of the story if you don't mind.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I would move to take this item from the table for further discussion.
Excellent. Okay, George had second. Ron, you just dismissed it. All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda.
So at your last meeting, basically I presented a course of action to discontinue Turkey Lane from approximately Range Road to where we refer to as Sawmill Brook. There's a snowmobile bridge over that. And that's where the road would be discontinued, right at the, essentially what is now a snowmobile bridge. At the last meeting, I presented you with the option after working with the Gallaudetts who are here tonight with a 20-foot easement. And what I'll share with you is that the 20-foot easement on there is pretty much the path that the Gallaudetts have maintained, not the town, to get to that snowmobile crossing. And people do use it today pretty much without restriction. My issue with this stretch of Turkey Lane is that there are no homes on it today. There are two houses, one that's right at the corner that basically comes out onto Range Road. And then there's another house, the Gallaudetts, which is much further back that also accesses via Range Road. There are no existing homes that access this road from this piece of Turkey Lane. Should a person come in to ask for a building permit today on this section, the code officer would have to grant that building permit because it's in basically a public, public road status. And then we would have the battle that I would have to bring to court and say, this road has been abandoned and the town has not had maintenance on it for any, any length of time. And there have been small pieces of maintenance, but nothing very, of any substance. Probably the snowmobile bridge was the biggest piece that we helped with here because this bridge had, bridge had washed out over time and the snowmobile club wanted our help to put this bridge in. The council did this, I think, probably 12, 13 years ago, it might have gone in. So we would have to fight over a discontinuance for a house that was built anywhere along Turkey Lane. So instead of doing that, instead of having a legal battle, I, I went to the Gallaudetts who own both sides of the road. Lou Gallaudet is here, she is the owner. And I said, let's work out a discontinuance plan so that we could get rid of this road. I'm going to tell you that I'm going to basically go one way or the other, abandonment or discontinuance. Discontinuance is a lot cleaner in the long run. It basically gives public easement rights, it describes those rights, and we can all get along and we don't have any investment. Anything that you don't want to do, you don't have to do. As a public easement, people could still walk over it, they still could hunt that area to back in some of the fields back there that some of the other property owners will allow as well. They could still snowmobile over it. And that's what we brought forward. And then we got into the discussion of giving up any portion of the road. I think if those of you, I think I have an aerial map, those of you who may be familiar with the property know that part of the road that's built in between these little red lines here functions pretty well, but this, this side of the road does have a pretty good drop-off in a pretty good gully area. This side of the road is a little bit higher and, you know, probably it would take a lot to expand the road in either direction. So where it's located was probably in its best location. So the 20-foot easement did not seem unreasonable. Where, where we got off in the discussion at the last meeting was Councilor Vale and his basically concern, we just don't know what we would use the land for right now, but something might come up 10 years, 20 years, 50 years from now, and then we would be kind of out of luck. So for me, I'm going to stop right there, but what I would share with you is that we are in a position right now that we need to do something with that. That something is entirely up to the town council and is all within your purview to do. What we tried to do was lay out what I thought was a reasonable plan between the budding landowner and the town. That was brought before you and then you tabled it because I think there was a feeling that maybe, maybe I didn't explain it well, but the discontinuances of this road is basically from maintenance standpoints. We're not going to plow it, we're not going to pave it, we're not going to gravel it, we're not going to do anything that you don't want to be done to it. The public easement allows us to continue to have access over this land so that we can access the other side of Turkey Lane, which ultimately heads out to Route 9. And I'll stop there and answer any questions that you can, that you want, or if you want to open it to the public first, I'll sit down.
Mike?
So why give up the 60 feet?
That was the request from the landowner. When I looked at the road, there was really no reason to have much more land for us. What happens at that point is all the setbacks are measured from that 20-foot instead of the 60-foot. So there is a small advantage. I mean, you've, you still have 20 feet of setback on each side if you keep the 60-foot right-of-way. And the buildability of it, to actually build something there is, it would be pretty tough. Would be pretty tough.
I guess I'm kind of in Bob's camp.
I guess I'm kinda in Bob's camp that we don't know what's gonna happen down the road and for us to give up a right-of-way, to go down this twenty feet from sixty, that's big. I have no problem making, discontinuing it, banning it. Well, not banning it, but discontinuing it. But I guess I'm just struggling, Bill, with why we would wanna give up a sixty-foot right-of-way and go down a twenty.
Bob?
Can we discontinue the road at the sixty-foot width?
Absolutely.
So, I favor this next, this change. But the question that came to me after our conversation, how does this affect us in our other areas of the community? Greeley Road Extension, Valley Road Extension, Range Way Extension. Those are three that come to mind. And part of the thing that I've always wanted to have done is signage so that we, people knew that this was public way even if it's no more than a footpath. And again, you know, people who want to access the brook. There's a nice pool down there for fishing, footpath from both directions. But I wanna make sure, and I was hoping the town attorney would be here because I wanted to press her on those questions. I wanna make sure that we're not giving any rights away for anyplace else in the town and that we're not setting precedent.
The town attorney will be here at the next meeting when you have the formal public hearing. Tonight was supposed to be the public hearing, but we tabled it last time. So, I asked her not to come until we could notice all the neighbors and because if there are other questions that come up, I wanted her to be here and be present for everybody. So, tonight is just to set the public hearing for the next meeting. Then we'll basically take comment. You cannot vote on it that night. You still have to wait an additional time period and it'll be the meeting after that that you actually can take the official vote. So, there'll be almost three bites at this apple, in this case, four because of the tabling action. So, tonight, we can ask questions. We can talk about what you wanna, get back to the town attorney. You know, what do we lose by, you know, we don't lose anything by keeping it at sixty feet. You have the right as the elected body to keep it at sixty feet. But you also have the right to be very specific to the types of activities that can occur or not occur there if you choose to do so. So, all of those are in your purview and the town attorney will be, will confirm that at the next meeting for you as well.
Shirley, you got a comment?
I was just concerned about public notification because I think you weren't even aware that my friend Beth lives right there. She's that small lot. Beth and I grew up together.
Right, right.
And I wanna make sure, I mean, she's a direct of butter, but there are a lot of people in that, on that road that use that for walking or recreating or... My other, I guess my other concern was if we were to shorten it, that we would make, I mean, narrow it, which it doesn't sound like the board's in favor of it. But that we do maybe twenty-eight feet. So, then if you snowplow it, then you've got five feet on either side for the snowbanks.
We're not gonna do anything.
No, but...
We're gonna do nothing.
But my son, who has to put in a very long driveway, has to consider not just the width of his driveway, but where the snowbanks are gonna be. And I think that would be the same in this situation.
So, playing this out...
Because it sounds like you have plans for Jane to maybe access some of this road to build a driveway and build a house from her letter, from Lou's letter.
Right.
Which is not unlike Harris, I mean, Harris Road and Range Way. But every time I walk through that yard, I feel like I'm trespassing. I mean, they know that it's public access, but they also put a rock up to discourage people from going through on a utility vehicle.
And this is no different than any of the roads that you or Bob described. Those would be all argued for abandonment. If we got a building permit, I would basically explain, "We have abandoned those and that would be challenged in court and then we'd have to deal with it." That's why this one was, to me, an easy, easier one to bring forward. We can bring them all forward and we can discontinue them all. In some cases, you own the land, in some cases, you own the easement rights. This case, you own the easement rights. You don't own the land under it. Range Roads, which Range Way is one of them, you typically own the land under them. Tuttle Road, Greeley Road, Greeley Road Extension, those are Range Ways, which we own the land under.
That's still clearly delineated with the old stone walls.
Stone walls, you can see it, you can see it today.
Yeah.
So, tonight is truly just to set the public hearing. It is not to take any action. You really can't for two more meetings. But I did, I did tell the Galladets you were gonna bring this back after Bob and I discussed this. Lou has provided you a letter that requesting, giving you some of the points of discussion, which were all accurate, so.
Any other comments from the council? This is a public hearing and I'm opening it to public. Lou?
Take off this very constrictive mask. Whoa. Excuse me. So, as you know, I gave you this letter...
Who can you state your name and...
My name is Lou Galladet and I live at sixty-seven Range Road. And I've written my thoughts on the matter before you in order to be as concise as possible. So, I'm just going to go ahead and read this, bear with me. "I own most of the land and the only buildable lots on the section of Turkey Lane between Range Road and the bridge over Mill Brook. For the over thirty years that Denny and I, my husband and I, have lived on Range Road, Turkey Lane has been an overgrown path, used occasionally by hunters. Up to now, we haven't posted our land, families wanting to fish and snowmobilers whenever there's snow. This public use is in keeping with our own values and seems also to agree with the desire of the town to provide recreational access to the citizens as well as to retain some rural spaces in Cumberland. Some months ago, one of our children contacted Chris Bolduc for information about setbacks and other regulations in the event they were to build on Turkey Lane. Bill Shane, as a good steward of the town's treasury, began to look at discontinuing instead of improving and maintaining the road, which would have to happen if somebody wants to build on the road. It could happen, a huge savings for the town. If the ownership of our land changed hands, it is conceivable that a developer would ask that the town, this town way, be made safe and convenient for motor vehicles. In other words, a road, a major road. We hope you will discontinue this part of Turkey Lane and implement a public easement with restrictions similar to those of the Rhine's Forest, allowing pedestrians and non-motorized vehicles as well as snowmobiles. Turkey Lane is now described as a four-rod, or as I understand it, that means actually sixty-six feet wide road. We are asking that you reduce the public, oh, sorry, there's a typo there. We are asking that you reduce the public easement width to twenty feet, which still is wide enough for repair or emergency vehicles if the town should need to drive in there with those kinds of vehicles. We would like to provide one of our children with a house lot and a thirty-foot setback from a twenty-foot public easement would improve the spacing of a house design, especially because we would like to keep the abutting field open. There's a big field there as you come down Range Road on the right and we would like to keep that open. Please feel free to come walk Turkey Lane to see what I'm describing. So, in conclusion, we hope that you will discontinue this part of Turkey Lane and restrict it to specific recreational use. We also ask that you set a twenty-foot width for the public easement. Thank you for the opportunity to explain our request."
Thank you, Lou. Mr. Stiles?
Thank you, Council. Bill Stiles, Range Road. I'm one of the ones, it's in Bob Vale's camp because I used to drive through that road until the bridge went out. You didn't wanna do it when the springtime, when you get stuck coming down the hill on the other side. However, I would like to see the town spend some money on it. Not much. I would like to see them take a bush hog down there and just widen the road up so that those of us who are getting to the point where we can't walk that distance can at least drive down and fish the pool, which is really nice down there. And I, for one, don't like to give up particular roads like that in the town where we have an interest. Now, it doesn't go all the way through, I understand that. But like you, looking towards the future, we own that. Why give it up?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Beth Davies, sixty-three Range Road. I'm the side of the land that he said doesn't count. My land does go right up to Turkey Lane and so I do have the rights to come down that road if I wanted to build on the extra part and put a large garage attached to my house. I do use Turkey Lane as an avid snowmobiler, which goes across the street to the other house where I have. It goes up in the fields, it connects to the Falmouth Trails. So, regularly going through there. I also have a four-wheel drive, which I regularly drive down to the brook to fish down there for trout. So, it is used constantly by our family and by other people. To discontinue that, I think, would be terrible. Which way are the snowmobiles going if they can't go through that area? Should we close off the land across the street around sixty and seventy-two Range Road that allows the snowmobiles to go up through those paths and go up and around as they've done for years? We have a relationship with the snowmobilers that come through. Nobody has done anything that has been detrimental to anybody's land and I think it would be a disservice to the community. I, too, have a bush hog attached to a tractor. I am more than willing to go across the land and mow the path down as I do back behind the house at sixty Range Road to make sure that those paths are walkable. I have considered and have had conversations with Bill because, as you know or have heard, both of my German Shepherds were killed on Range Road by a speeding car. And I need that area to be able to walk pets and to be able to possibly come in from that direction instead of directly off the road. So, I think that it needs more thought. Perhaps he's correct, that you need to come down there and walk and see what a beautiful path and area it could be because it would be a loss to the community. The Rains Road up where people walk those trails are always busy and have cars that are lined up on the side of the road to walk. People are looking to get out in these times and looking for places to go. And I think it would be a disservice to Cumberland to shut down that path or to not allow what are the recreational things that people are now using them for. Because I know that Denny is not gonna let the snowmobiles go across that open lot that they have that's on the other side of their barn. And I don't have a wide enough lot to allow the snowmobiles to cross to get over to the other side of the land that we have on the other side of the road at sixty Range Road. So, I encourage you to come and see because it would be a giant loss for many people that are out and trying to get out in these times. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Denny has a comment.
Quickly, Beth, I think perhaps you're not completely understanding our proposal...
Denny, state your name.
Oh, Denny Galladet, sixty-seven Range Road. I'm, we are very happy to have the snowmobiles use that trail and the whole idea of the public easement is to permit those uses and make them permanent. So, the idea of this being an effort to block that is not correct. Thank you.
Town Manager?
So, there's, I don't know. I'll just rewind the tape and just see what I said, I guess. But the discontinuance is a legal term. It means that we do not want to maintain it for vehicular traffic. We are obligated by state law to maintain roads so that vehicles can travel over them. With a discontinuance, we are eliminating that responsibility. That's all we're doing. We're opening it up to a public easement. We're opening it up to walking down there, snowmobiling, everything you wanna do. It's really up to you guys what you want to allow on the discontinuance. What I don't wanna do is what happened to Harris Road. I don't want this town to spend six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on improving a road that essentially nobody was going down to until somebody put a building permit in a driveway and said, "Now, build the road since you've been maintaining it as a public road." The town went to court, lost that lawsuit and had to spend a lot of money on Harris Road to extend it. So, that's what we're trying to prevent. The Galladets have been very willing to work with us on this. They're not looking or seeking damages in this case, which in a lot of discontinuances there are. So, that's why this is before you. It's not to eliminate anyone's access to the water. It's not to eliminate the snowmobiles. Any type of recreational easements you wanna add to it is totally up to you. What I don't wanna do is make it our responsibility to build it to a road that will allow cars to travel over it as required by state law. So, we're either gonna abandon it or discontinue it, but we can't do nothing. We have to do something or else we're gonna be in a lot of trouble financially. And that's really what I'm trying to do. And I apologize because we miscommunicated by three miles on this one. This is really just about basically us, our ability to service it for the general public, for cars to travel over it. If you wanna take your Jeep over it or four-wheeler over it, whatever the council wants to put on there for allowances is truly up to you. The Galladets basically laid out what their request was, but the ultimate decision is up to you and then they can choose to challenge you in court if they feel it's not appropriate. So, I hope we don't get there because they have been great to work with. They have worked very closely with us in trying to put something together that didn't really cost the town much. A lawsuit would be much bigger cost on this, so.
Thank you, Lou. Bring it back to the council. Any other comments? Shirley?
Well, all we're doing tonight is putting this on the agenda for our next meeting.
That's right.
So, I would like to listen to more of the people, more of the public and I have no interest in discussing this further tonight. I don't know about anybody else, but I would like to move that we set a public hearing date of September fourteenth to hear public testimony on the order of discontinuance.
Just a second. Other comments? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening.
I'll be over for a walk, Beth.
She didn't hear you.
Wednesday looks lovely, I'll meet you over there.
Okay, the next item is twenty dash zero six zero. "To hold a public hearing and act on a zone change in a request for a three-point-three-five acre parcel located in Village Green Center commercial zone to a medium-density residential as recommended by the planning board." Mr. Town Manager?
This item went to the planning board last week. It went down in flames, basically five to one against the recommendation. The comments ranged from everything from basically the number of homes, which I think there were three single-family homes and a duplex in a very short-distance piece of the old Gray Road. They felt the density was a lot. The neighbors basically all spoke against the zone change request. They understood that there would be a potential of a commercial building, you know, built on the entire parcel. But as our zoning requires, there would be a buffering plan that would have to go with that change and they would rather have a commercial entity on that lot versus five homes. The planning board agreed. The applicant basically knew that it was only a recommendation and that tonight they could have a public hearing come back. I think he is just taking some time to consider what his options might be otherwise. As you know, the lumberyard that was there is now gone and the building is now for sale. I encouraged him to consider other possibilities because there's enough land there to put basically another board barn right on that property, which would be, you know, good for the commercial development of Route One Hundred as well. So, he's looking at his options. I told him, just, you know, don't rush into, you know, just not showing up, but tabling it and then... it and then deciding what he wants to do. So I don't think you'll see that application before you for a vote because I think it was pretty clear that it wasn't, you know, strongly supported when it left the council, but we gave him the opportunity to state his case, and it didn't go so well. So we may see him back here in a month or so with a different request or a thank you just to say we're going to go commercial or ask for actually the final nail in the coffin, if you will, for the project. So we'll see where it goes. That's up to Mr. Record to decide, but he has requested it be tabled for now.
This motion, it has been tabled by the applicant. Do we need any further discussion?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next item is twenty dash zero six one. To hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter two-two-nine, Site Plan Review, Section ten, Approval Standards and Criteria, subsection H, Exterior Lighting of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the planning board. Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Chair, at the last meeting, you forwarded to the planning board the improvements to the site plan ordinance which dealt with exterior lighting. The planning board tweaked it slightly and recommended unanimously it for approval. So tonight, that's before you for acceptance or not.
Thank you. Any questions of the town manager? Any discussion?
I noticed that there's a little bit of change from when we sent it to them. They've asked to keep in a sentence and a phrase. And I have no problem with that.
Okay.
From the old language, it's highlighted in our document, which the phrase, the sentence they want to keep is, "The proposed development must have adequate exterior lighting to provide for its safe use during nighttime hours if such use is contemplated." And then the phrase that they want to keep is, "For a reasonable period of time."
Sounds good.
It's fine with me.
Any other discussion?
I think my only, well, I guess maybe the discussion around that, because when we were talking about it, one of the, when we were first kind of brought us to throw it to ordinance or not, was that the wording was very, I mean, obviously it was very subjective at the time, and clearly the wording they've put back in is the more subjective wording. So just a more, I was at the committee meeting, just any sense of, or was there discussion of, we went from maybe one end of the spectrum of everything was subjective to then the wording that I think was put in front of them was very specific? And then was it purposeful to say, "We want to put a little more subjectivity back in"? Was that in essence?
Yes, that's it in a nutshell.
Okay. There we go. All right, cool. Okay, I'm all right.
Further discussion?
I'll give you your motion.
Thanks, Ron.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend Chapter two-two-nine, Site Plan Review, Section ten, Approval Standards and Criteria, subsection H, Exterior Lighting of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the planning board.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Further discussion? All in favor? You got that, Brenda? Let's move on then, thank you. The next one is one of my favorites. Twenty dash zero six two. To authorize the issuance of Property Tax Assistance Program payments. Mr. Town Manager?
Before you, you have a memo from Eliza Porter, our deputy town clerk, who has assisted me with this program for the last few years. There were a hundred and ninety residents that qualified for the program, and basically we have just under sixty thousand dollars of assistance funds to go out. We still have about a dozen, eighteen people that we know of that still have not officially applied. That's why the request was not to exceed seventy thousand instead of at sixty thousand, but that's up to you if you want to lower it. But we do typically try to capture everybody that has applied in the past and find out why they haven't, if they just were too busy or didn't know or whatever. So my request would be to at least keep it at seventy, and if they don't continue to apply, that money would be left in the fund for next year. I would also tell you that we have broken it down and we're ready to meet with the senior tax circuit breaker committee so that they can look at the data to see how many people would get knocked out of the program if we dropped the income from the ninety thousand that it's listed at all the way down to forty-two thousand, which is the property tax fairness credit, which several communities use, including Falmouth. Surprisingly, by doing that here, we still would have about, well, over a hundred and fifteen people that would qualify even if it was down to forty-two thousand. But remember when we pulled this together and kept it going, we also wanted to try to take care of the people in the middle too. And I think if you kept it in the sixty or seventy thousand dollar range, you would accomplish that pretty well. So we will schedule a meeting of the circuit breaker committee soon to come back to the council prior to the next budget being set, and hopefully they'll have a recommendation. Because depending on where that slides to, if it slides downward, it could have meant anywhere from an extra hundred dollars to an extra a hundred and fifty dollars for each one of the recipients that left, that were left on the list, depending on where you bring the bar down to. So it's significant.
Tom?
I'd like to have at some point, and I'll vote in favor of this, but have a real discussion among the council, where, who do we want to affect? And do we want to give them the maximum? I just did the numbers up tonight. There's seventeen people on this list that their income is eighty thousand and over. There's an additional twenty-three people on the list whose incomes are seventy thousand dollars or more. So, you know, there's a total of forty people on that list that their income's seventy grand and above. So like, and I don't fault them, I mean, seventy doesn't go as long as far as it used to, but I just like the council, we, at some point, let's have a discussion about where...
We did have that.
Who we want, who, where, do we want the money to go to the lower, or do we want to spread it out? And I've got a real open mind on this whole thing. I'll listen to all the sides, but I just think we just got to get our stuff together and make a decision.
George?
Yeah, I agree with Mike, and I think we probably could have a discussion, part of the discussion having to do with longevity and whether ten years makes sense or whether it ought to be longer. But that, those adjustments would have to do with what our capability is realistically in funding this thing. But it's a discussion we ought to have.
Yeah, and I think this senior, as a subcommittee, we're with you, right? That we haven't looked at this in quite a number of years, and I think we all kind of brought up the similar of the amounts and all that good stuff, so I think we're all on the same page. Sorry, Bob.
The Finance Committee had this discussion, Mike, and the recommendation was to lower it. I'm still in favor of lowering it.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not even disagreeing with you, Bob. I'd just like to have a really workshop discussion with it and see what we want to do and, you know, take a look at the years of residents in here. Just take a look at the whole thing. I don't think there's a more important program that we do in this town, the council. This is a great thing we do. I just, I just want to have a discussion about it at some point.
We're pulling together numbers for the subcommittee with other communities doing. Cape is at sixty-six thousand. Falmouth's at forty-four thousand. Yarmouth, I think, is in the eighties. I think we're the highest right now. We tied it to the HUD numbers, which were the Greater Portland Region area metro numbers that were published every year, so it was easy to find. But I think, I think it was pretty clear that the Finance Committee also wanted the subcommittee to look at it, work on it, and then maybe we could workshop it so the whole council could have some input and then we could bring it back. So we'll set a date for the subcommittee to meet, and as always, everybody's invited, so, you know. I think it'd be good for them to see the numbers and to work through that and, you know, compare where they'd like to land. Because it was pretty clear that everybody wanted to do a little bit more, because when we first started this program, most people were getting seven hundred and fifty dollars, Mike. But the program has grown in such popularity that, you know, now we're down to a much lower number, and the average person really is not getting what they used to get just four years ago, so.
Yeah, I think it's important to...
However, they're very grateful with what they get.
Oh, absolutely.
I was just going to say, I think it's important for the record, right? When we're all saying lower, we're saying to lower the income level so we could give more, right? The whole budget would stay the same, if not potentially go up. It's how we're, to your point, Mike, how are we spreading that? Just want to throw that on there.
Yeah, fortunately, we added it to the budget last year, or else we would have been in a real tough spot this year.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
Oh, ma'am, I'll move.
Shirley?
I move to authorize the issuance of Senior Property Tax Assistance Program payments.
Do we have a second? Ron? All in favor? Thank you. Unanimous, Brenda. Next item is twenty dash zero six three. To consider and act on forwarding to the planning board to develop setback requirements for residential solar as recommended by the ordinance committee. Mr. Town Manager?
I'm going to just be real brief, because I'm going to turn this to Council Story King, who's done most of the lion's share of work on this since the ordinance committee met. But we may want to change course on that a little bit. I think this all came up because of, because of our restrictions to date. We have no definition of what a solar panel is defined as, so the code officer defaults to it as a structure. And a structure is a pretty big setback, especially from a rear property line in Cumberland. It's about seventy-five feet in most neighborhoods. We had a request from somebody, "You can put a shed at fifteen feet, but a solar panel has to go seventy-five feet away," which didn't make a lot of sense. So we were kicking it around at the ordinance committee and said, "Well, maybe the best place to land would be at the planning board." But the solar panel credits go from twenty-six to twenty-two percent after this year, the federal rebate credits. And that's a substantial loss if you're going to invest in a, you know, a solar field that's going to basically power your house. So Shirley's done a lot of research. I'm going to stop now and turn it over to her, and she came up with, I think, which is a really good idea. Shirley, please.
So we put this on the, we asked for this to be put on the agenda because we anticipated having another ordinance committee meeting and having something to send to the planning board. And then because of the way the dates fall, the next planning board meeting is before our next council meeting. So that's why it's on the agenda. We had a new resident who's building a home in Cumberland ask to put solar panels in. And if you know about this, putting, installing solar panels when you build a house is a lot cheaper than after the fact. And so he's trying to coordinate these solar panels with the construction of his house. But he, he has a back lot, and he has some restrictions on the backside of his property. He has a seventy-five-foot buffer, or a seventy-five-foot... Well, he has a seventy-five-foot buffer, but then he needs to have other setback requirements. But if he put a shed back there, he would only need fifteen feet. Now, what he was asking for was to put in four posts that he could install eight-foot solar panels on. But he can't do that the way our, because we have no place in our ordinance or in our building code for that to be allowed. So the code enforcement officer was kicking it up to structures, you know? If in doubt, if it's not a shed, it's a structure. So I've been going back and forth. I did some research. I found some ordinances in South Portland. They have a very lengthy ordinance. Falmouth has nothing. Yarmouth has nothing. And so last night, I happened upon a very involved, thorough, publicly heard three times ordinance in Belfast, of all places. So I shared it with Bill and the other ordinance committee members. It is much bigger and more intense than anything we need here in Cumberland, but there's some good stuff in it that we might be able to steal. And just prior to our meeting tonight, I spoke with the manager, and he came up with a great idea. Our wind power ordinance is a standalone ordinance, and we just had to write it and pass it, didn't need to go to the planning board. And we could do a similar thing with a solar panel ordinance. It could be a standalone ordinance that we could, what I would like is for the ordinance committee to sit with this, pick out the parts we like. Carlos is already working on that, the parts that might be appropriate for Cumberland. You know, I'm not interested in reinventing the wheel. I'm interested in stealing as much language as we can from other people where it might be working.
Steal it.
Teachers are good at borrowing other people's work. So I think what I would like us to consider is to not send this to the planning board, but instead have the ordinance committee bring the entire council an ordinance, a solar array ordinance, a residential solar array ordinance that would work for us. Mr. Vale? Oh, sorry, I'm not chair anymore.
Well, I was going to bring this up in due business, but I think it's probably appropriate to bring it up now. I was, I was going to ask that we revisit the folks that wanted to bring the solar farm out to Route one hundred, a piece of land there, up above, or just below J. Brothers. And I was intrigued by that proposal, and I wanted to revisit that as, for our own benefit. So I'm not sure that we should just look at it from a residential point of view. I think we should look at it from both sides, a commercial point of view too, and develop some guidelines because...
I am happy to send you the entire Belfast ordinance, and you can take a look at it, and we can have a conversation, what you like about it.
Okay.
Is that good?
That's good.
Okay. I'll do it right now.
I've got a stupid question. I was on the Board of Appeals for twenty-two years, as most of us know. I've been on the council for about fifteen. When did a shed become not a structure? Years ago it was a structure.
I don't know, but it has its own setbacks.
Setback, I understand. It's always been fifteen feet. But...
But residential structures in some places are thirty feet.
Exactly. But the point is, the shed's always been fifteen feet, but I don't think they specifically ruled it out as a structure, you know what I mean?
Right. But everything else gets thrown into the, the building code as like a house structure.
Right. But if it were looked at as a structure, then he could just put his...
I think it is a structure, because I...
Well, I think it is too, Bob.
A treehouse is considered a structure as far as setbacks.
I mean, we, obviously you can designate that a shed can be within fifteen feet. It doesn't eliminate the fact that it's a structure.
That's the only, that's the only type of structure that we forgive that huge setback.
Right.
And it's a structure, it's a structure in a weird sense that, once it's over six hundred square feet, the main building code requires it have a foundation under it. So sheds can go up to a twenty-by-thirty shed, and then it doesn't require a foundation. Anything above that requires a foundation. So I think that's the difference in our ordinance a little bit. But sheds have been allowed to be placed fifteen feet because of the onerous requirement of a seventy-five-foot setback. It's going to be on most people's decks, so.
Tom?
Mike?
I guess I don't know why we're talking about sheds and solar arrays in the same conversation.
Oh.
I mean... I mean, they're talking apples and oranges, and, you know, I don't, we wanna, we put a solar array on an old dump, which was down over the hill and away, and we still had people clamoring about it because they had a look at them. And now we're talking about putting it fifteen feet from the neighbor's land?
No, I don't think...
Well, it's not even, there's no neighbor.
Well, but I just...
Yeah, and then really that fifteen isn't the right answer, but seventy-five's probably not the right answer either, and I think that was what you were researching to say what is the right answer.
Well, my suggestion when I first heard it in ordinance was, why doesn't he just build a shed and put it on the roof? Because, you know, no problem, no harm, no foul, right? But where the solar company has determined the best location for his solar panels is a different spot than he's already permitted for a shed.
And I think, George, at the last meeting, you said, you know, we may have to look at changing our appetite to what we think is appealing or not appealing in, in our backyards as technology advances. I mean, people are gonna, we've already, we've already permitted over fifty solar fields in Cumberland in the last two years, fifty. So, and all of them have met, if they weren't on the roof, have met the seventy-five foot setback. So they were on the long, skinnier lots that had the deeper, deeper distances, which seventy-five feet wasn't that big a deal. But when they get to the roads that have more road frontage and are not as deep, that seventy-five foot becomes almost punitive in some cases. Shirley also sent out, I think to the Ordinance Committee, I'm not sure if the whole council got it, that the state basically said, you can't make rules that basically restrict the implementation of solar technology, so.
That was in state law, I found that.
Right, which was really good to know, which was perfect to know. So that goes against the HOAs that say, you have to come to me and say, we're gonna permit your solar panel. You don't really have to anymore. That was washed out by the state law. So I think there's a lot of discussion that could happen at the Ordinance Committee that you guys could say, to pick, pick a percentage of whatever the rear setback is, or pick a number, or whatever. This, the comparison to the shed was, you know, at six hundred square feet, thirty by twenty, is that as big a solar array as you want to put in? Is it six hundred feet, is it a thousand square feet? All of those can be details worked out at the Ordinance Committee, and I think a lot easier and a lot quicker than they could at the Planning Board. But to everyone's point, this doesn't apply to just one lot, this has to apply townwide. So where it fits in one, it may not fit so well in another district, and we just have to be careful.
Right.
Because, you know, maybe seventy-five feet is the right number in, in most districts, and maybe it's fifty in others, and maybe it's thirty-five, I don't know.
Right. And one of my concerns I've shared with the Ordinance Committee is, you know, I wanna, I wanna support this, I wanna support power, solar power and renewable energy. I don't want us in twenty-five years looking around the town at these ancient solar panel robot things that have no use anymore. And I think in, so if we have an ordinance, we can also address what people have to do once their solar panels have lost their useful life. You know, you can't just leave it there and use it as a clothesline. You know, it's not like that piece of gym equipment that you hang your, your dirty clothes from. So I think a standalone ordinance is the way to go, and I thank the manager for that suggestion.
Ron?
Sorry, ordinance members, for another meeting.
I'm okay with that.
I think the key word here might be freestanding, because technology is coming down the road, and Bob, you probably know this, you're gonna have solar panels in shingles, you're gonna have solar panels in vinyl siding, you're gonna have solar panels in windows. And I think what we don't want to see is these freestanding things that follow the sun around all day long. I mean, I certainly don't want my neighbor to put one in the middle of their front yard because that's the only place the zone says it'll fit. So I think maybe freestanding might be the key word. I mean, God forbid that somebody wants to build a house and we won't let them put solar panels on their roof. I mean, that's a no-brainer. I mean, technology is there now, but I think the aesthetics is what we're looking at more than anything else, I mean, so.
Good comment. Other discussion?
So we have no action on this for tonight.
That's exactly right.
Wonderful technology.
So I'm recommending no action for this for tonight.
No action.
We'll just set up an Ordinance Committee meeting and go for it.
Ordinance Committee, it's knocked out of it.
We have a motion for no action. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, now to the last item, twenty dash zero six four, to consider an act on forwarding to the Planning Board, a public hearing and recommendation amendments to Chapter three one five, three fifteen zoning, Section twenty-one, Town Center District, B twelve, wow, daycare centers and nurseries, nursery schools, to increase the number of children allowed from twenty to twenty-eight as recommended by the Ordinance Committee. Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Chair, the Ordinance Committee did review this pretty quickly. Where it's in a commercial zone, they felt it was kind of a no-brainer. I think this came as a request from the Congregational Church, and that would only be along the Main Street Town Center District corridor. It was a pretty small area, and with the pending issues with childcare and all kinds of stuff coming up in, in the next few weeks and few months, I think it made some sense. And at this point, they brought it back to the council for your, for your consideration and sending it to the Planning Board for public hearing. Remember that we do allow these in just about every district in town, so this is limited to the TCD and not the other districts. So that'll be a question the Planning Board will probably have some heartburn on, because they don't like to specifically keep it in one district. But I think this is something that we can deal with as we come forward. I think we'd get a lot of people showing up to meetings if we were coming in with this as a blanket for all districts.
Thank you. Any questions to the Town Manager? Ron?
Roughly how many daycares are licensed in the town of Cumberland, do you know, Bill?
There are lots. I, I would say somewhere between two and three dozen.
No kidding?
Yeah.
That many? Wow.
But this is the only one in the Town Center District, right?
Correct.
How many are not opening this fall?
I, I do not know. They don't have to report to us, they're basically licensed through the state.
I know the one in North Yarmouth at Tender Years is an opening.
Yes, it sure is. It's closed.
It seemed like a random number, twenty-eight, and I was like, why twenty-eight? And I, I was like, why not thirty? But the state has, the state determined that the space that only allowed twenty-eight. They, they, the state licenses upon square footage per student or per child.
Shirley, does it have anything to do with the number of people who are overseeing the children?
It totally does, they're trying to accommodate...
If you have two or three assistants or if you just have one person.
This nurse, this nursery school is working, they've been working with the school, trying to accommodate some of those Wednesday kids who, every child in town will need care on Wednesdays, until at least mid-October.
But I was just thinking, the ideal classroom is twenty.
Yeah.
Probably not any more than that ideally. So you're kinda wondering, a daycare, if it's one person running the daycare, should they be allowed to have twenty-eight or thirty kids?
Middle school classrooms are twelve right now.
Yeah, and it depends on the age, the ratios, it's all in the state licensing. Like smaller kids, it's one to four or something, versus as you get older, it can...
But in general, schools are built, it's like Mr. Vale's concern when we, when we were talking about building a new school. He wants us to build a school that can be used as school with lots of aged children, but your classroom sizes differ depending on the age of the child and what the state allows you for square footage per child, blah, blah, blah. You know that. All right.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Shirley?
I moved it forward to the Planning Board for public hearing and recommendation amendments to Chapter three fifteen zoning, Section twenty-one, Town Center District, B twelve, daycare centers and nursery schools, to increase the number of children allowed from twenty to twenty-eight as recommended by the Ordinance Committee.
For a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mike. Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Thank you. New business. Mike?
I've just got one this past week, and he wasn't a resident of our town, but a lot of people knew him, Richard Smith, known as Smitty, used to run the Yarmouth Exxon Station, passed away. One hell of a nice man. His son-in-law was Mike Morald, police chief, and Yarmouth, Ronnie, you probably did a lot of business with him over the years.
Yeah.
Just, just did everything for the community, and...
Really good guy.
I can only tell you the hundreds of cars that he towed for me over the years, and how many breaks he gave people, helped the people that couldn't pay, and just a wonderful man, so my condolences to his family. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Shirley?
I just have one thing to report. The Ordinance Committee met last Wednesday morning, and we met with the farmers, four farmers, five, four, four or five farmers. It was a, it was a really good meeting.
Sure was.
It was, it was really nice to feel like we're doing something that might be not only trend-setting, because we're on the forefront of this, thanks to Mr. Vale's ideas about preserving farmland, but to be able to sit and listen to the farmers and their concerns about restrictions and regulations. They have so many, from the federal government, from soils and conservation, from the state. We don't need to be restricting farming anymore than is already restricted. So that's all, it was just a really nice meeting.
Thanks, Shirley. Bob?
I just wanted to follow on with that, and I, in the periphery, I caught parts of the discussion, and one of the concerns about is not having processing, places to process. And, and I'm guessing that it's not just a problem for Cumberland, but for other communities. And so I'm hope, hopeful that the conversation continues and that we include the Cumberland Farmers Club in these conversations, because I, I view them as, as a potential solution to some of the farmers' problems.
That's actually really interesting. I wonder, they probably have space there to set up an abattoir. That's not an avatar, folks. An abattoir is a slaughterhouse.
You didn't start with the speech.
Bob, anything else? Allison?
I have two things. One is, I wanted to let the council know that Town Manager Sheen was kind enough to connect me with Eliza Porter, and I met with her this week to talk about the communication strategy and kind of, really just got a nice baseline from her of kind of what she's done in recent years and kind of what she inherited. But I wanted to let all of you know that our plan is we're going to get back together on September ninth and try to put together, well, our attempt, our goal is to put together a bit of a plan, if you will, and be able to present that to, to all of you at the fourteenth meeting, to just kind of start to get some feedback and do a little bit of a working session together as well when it comes to kind of outreach, as well as just in general kind of the communication plan and timing and things like that. So I just wanted to let all of you know that that was coming. And then number two is, before the meeting started, I gave, gave my food pantry donation to Chairman Gruber, because as some of you may know, I do have a school-aged child and saw the supply list this year, which with the inability to share supplies and being able to support outdoor learning, it is lengthy and it adds up quickly. And so I, I learned this week that the food pantry is not only supporting the food needs in our community, but also the school supply. So for anyone out there who is in need or knows someone, that, just letting them know they can count, contact the food pantry for support there too, and so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
George?
I don't have anything other than to say, as far as the farmers are concerned, I think we ought to eliminate fees, period. And that's ultimately what the Ordinance Committee is probably gonna come to, as far as, and, and I think Bob deserves an awful lot of credit for having stuck a pin in the right place. So that's all I have.
Ron?
A couple of things. A little over a week ago, it was brought to my attention that some juveniles painted some graffiti on the back of the West Cumberland Fire Station, so I texted the Town Manager, and literally in two minutes, he said, I'm on it, and the next day, it was painted over with, so, thank you, Bill. And the next thing, George, thank you for your donation to the food pantry, you didn't have to do that.
It wasn't mine.
Yes, it was yours.
It was, it was yours.
I told you it was no charge, so you're a generous person, thank you, so that's all I have.
Thanks. My input is pretty simple. The food pantry, we were closed last week, but we still received many, a lot of donations as, as usual from Hanaford and Yarmouth, and it was terrific. I gotta tell you, the Ordinance Committee is, is humming away. They met last week and did a wonderful job, very impressive work by them. The Planning Board, as we talked about, met last, last Tuesday evening, and they did their terrific job. And we had a number of residents that actually testified, and they were so respectful in all their comments, and I think they did a terrific job in that. And then Ron actually testified. Did a good job, Ron. He got right up there and he testified. And what did you testify on?
Lighting.
You're not gonna tell me, huh? Did a terrific job, so thank you. And that's all I have. Mr. Town Manager, anything else?
Nope, all set.
We have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
You got that, Brenda? Thank you, everybody. Good night, Cumberland.